Barbara Barrosa.
Aziz Assam.
Laura Madrowitz.
Tara Franco.
All right, we are starting the meeting without one of our board members. We have not heard that he is not coming. But thankfully, the town board has designated an alternate for this zoning board. So, yes. Your sigh of relief is as big as mine. Don't worry. So, we're going to actually call and introduce our new zoning board alternate, Mary Semenar. We'll ask her to come to the table here. And you will serve tonight until Jim, until, you know, Jim Meyer appears. You know, and actually, we're going to officially appoint you to take the place of Tara Franco in, on the cell tower application anyway. So, that does give us four members for the zoning board application, just in case. So, we'll ask you to take your seat or get settled in, but actually stand up. I'm going to ask everybody to raise, to stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong. All right. Just a couple of general announcements first. I know we're now into February. There's still snow possible in March, so just a reiteration of the town's snow policy. In the event town hall is closed for inclement weather, the March meeting of the zoning board would be postponed, I'm sorry, would be actually canceled, and would be, anything that's on our agenda at that time would happen at the April meeting. Keep our fingers crossed that the weather continues for, at least for our board. Next meeting of the zoning board will be Tuesday, March 12th, again, assuming the weather cooperates. We do have a couple sets of minutes to approve. We do actually have amendments to those minutes, to some of these minutes. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 11th?
As amended.
As amended, correct?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
And Mary, you're going to abstain?
Yes, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. About that, Lisa. Okay, good. And the minutes of January 8th? As amended.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, I'm going to abstain.
Good. All right, good. All set. All right, first item of business we have tonight is the decision. This is a previously reviewed application. We've already conducted the public hearing. After that, we will do our public hearings that we have for the evening. And then lastly, there are a couple reviews. We have a couple new applications that the board has not reviewed, which at this time, we would not be taking public comment on, since we're really seeing them for the first time. So, let's start with item number one, which is decision, Appeal 3609 Gomes, Daniel Gomes, 219 Country Club Road, Hopeful Junction, is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep the existing swing set in front of the rear line of the dwelling and a nine-foot sideline variance pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I'll read the decision. This is an application by Daniel Gomes of 219 Country Club Road, Hopeful Junction, New York, requesting a variance to be allowed to keep her existing swing set in front of her, of the rear line of her dwelling, and a nine-foot sideline variance pursuant to section 194-107 of the town zoning ordinance. The property, applicant's property is located in the R1 zoning district. Applicant has a large prominent swing set located in front of the rear line of her dwelling. The applicant said that she placed it in its present location two years ago and did not place it in her rear yard because of the rock and slopes in her rear yard. She further indicated that she did not know that the town zoning ordinance did not allow her to place the swing set in front of the rear line of her dwelling. Section 194-107B, two of the town zoning ordinance provides setbacks. Such building should not be erected within 25 feet of her side or rear property line, and they must be located with the rear of the principal residence located on the same or adjoining lots. This board receiving testimony from several neighbors that the existing location of the swing set was that much more prominent because, number one, the swing set can be observed while traveling down the street; number two, the swing set has a blue rubber mulched playing surface; number three, the swing set has a yellow slide. The board explored possible screening that the applicant could somewhat conceal the swing set in its present location. The applicant offered a landscape plan with the proposed landscaping being superimposed on photographs furnished by the applicant. In the end, the neighbors indicated they had no objection to the swing set in its present location if properly screened, that is staggered rows of emerald green, aboriginal trees at a height which will conceal the swing set. Therefore, the zoning board of appeals finds under the New York State Town Law, section 267-B, number one, the grounding of the variance with appropriate required screening will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. Number two, the desired results cannot be achieved by some other means. Without a substantial cost to the applicants, as the rear yard is largely rock and slopes, and the yard would have to be excavated to allow the swing set to be moved in order to meet all the setback requirements. Number three, the variance requested is not substantial. Number four, the proposed area variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, as the applicant has agreed to plant and maintain evergreen trees in order to shield the swing set from the neighbors, and has agreed to a limited life for this variance. And, number five, the difficulty in adhering to the area requirement of the law was created by the applicant. However, that in itself does not preclude granting the relief sought, the two variances. As a result, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Daniel Gomes, 219 Country Club Road, Hopeful Junction, who is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a variance to allow the swing set to remain in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following express terms and conditions. Number one, the swing set can remain in its present location in front of the rear line of her dwelling for two years from the granting of these two variances, or until a sale of the premises. At the expiration of this two-year period, or upon a sale of the premises, whichever is earlier, the property owner must make an application to this board for a renewal of these two variances to be reviewed by a public hearing on such renewal application. Number two, the applicant must complete the approved landscape plan on file with the ZPA, with the zoning board of appeals by June 30th, 2013. Number three, if the applicant's rear yard is improved in the future, or flattened out the rear yard with retaining wall, fill, et cetera, then the applicant must relocate the swing set to the applicant's rear yard. Number four, the applicant is to replace the yellow slide with a green slide, and to replace the blue rubber mulched surface area, a playing surface, with a green or neutral colored rubber mulched playing surface. This is a type-two action under secret, and with no further action being required.
Yeah, I'm going to propose one amendment, actually. I'm reading this again. Item number one, what we should say is that the expiration of this two-year period, or upon a sale of the premises, whichever is earlier, the property owner must remove the swing set, or make an application to this board for a renewal.
I agree.
Are we?
As amended.
Okay, so, Aziz is agreeing with the amendment. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And, well, let me vote as follows. Barbara?
Aye, yes.
Mary?
Am I allowed to vote on this?
You are allowed to vote, as long as you can agree that, because of reading the minutes and stuff, that you've had an opportunity to become familiar with the application.
I have.
Okay, good. Aziz?
Aye, yes.
And Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so the motion carries. Okay, good. Awesome. Yes, that counts, and so she has the change. All right, we have an adjourned public hearing. Item number two, Appeal 3569 Homeland Towers. Homeland Towers LLC is requesting a special permit to locate a wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a 150-foot tall monopole and associated equipment on a property located at 23 Dartantra Drive, Hopeful Junction, New York. Property is in the ownership of Tufaro. Pursuant to section 194-80 of the zoning ordinance, the applicant is also requesting a 40-foot height variance for the proposed monopole, as well as a wetland water course disturbance permit. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
Yes.
So moved?
So moved, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. I do have to acknowledge that two of our members are going to recuse themselves, Aziz and Tara. So, they're going to step out. And we do have three members. So, with that, somewhere behind the board, you guys want to come up and, when we last met, we gave some specific instructions in terms of where to go from here, and we gave you time to be able to do some additional due diligence, so that we would come back to the February meeting with information.
That's correct.
To my knowledge, there's been no information received. So, I'm going to let you have the floor now, and let you go through, you know, what, where you guys are at at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tony Joffrey. I'm a member of the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Homeland Towers. As you will recall at the last appearance before you at the public hearing on this matter, we presented a, an overview and presentation with respect to the matter. The neighbors, there were a number of neighbors that were here that spoke in opposition to the proposal, and we received a, some lengthy documentation from the neighbors at that meeting. Since that time, we've been endeavoring to address all of the information in the documentation. We've been doing our due diligence and preparing that documentation. We're in the process of completing a response, and rather than submitting documentation to you piecemeal, we thought it was best to respond in one package. Also, in the intervening time, we did have the opportunity to go back to the town with respect to one of the alternatives. As you will recall, in the information that we did submit in this application, that's part of the record, there was an extensive alternate site analysis with respect to the investigations that we've done, the significant amount of work that we've done to identify potential alternate candidates, some of which included suggestions that we discussed with the board. And one of the, one in particular, which is acknowledged in a recent letter that I submitted to the town, is on town-owned property, the town water tank property that's located off of Innsbruck Boulevard. We identified in our original alternate site analysis that this particular location was rejected as a viable alternate candidate, because we have not been able to engage the town in lease negotiations so effectively, it was rejected by us. Since that time, since the last appearance before you, the town is contemplating reconsideration of that. And I qualify that in terms of that we would like to engage a discussion with your board to determine whether or not that be a viable candidate. We'd like to hear from the neighbors on whether or not they think that that would be a viable candidate. If those discussions seem favorable, the town may reconsider. So, the town has it indicated one way or the other. They would like to hear what happens this evening, to determine whether or not they will reconsider lease negotiations with us for a tower at that site. We believe that there are several-
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I really want to be absolutely clear on the record here. The town is not introducing or initiating any discussion about this alternate site.
No.
The town's attorney's correspondence to you just says that if the residents wish to initiate that as an alternate site, then the town board might consider it. But the town board has not, please, for all the neighbors, the town board has not initiated any discussion whatsoever about the alternate use, you know, the alternate site.
That's correct. This is something that Homeland Towers has investigated previous to the filing of this application, and during the intervening time, since the last public hearing, we did reapproach the town with respect to this candidate. So, you're absolutely correct in how you characterize it.
Just for the record, I think we'll include Mr. Wood's letter of January 31 responding to your letter, so everyone has, stake their positions concerning the points you just raised.
So, my January 29th letter and Mr. Wood's January 31st letter, yes.
We understand where both sides stand.
Yes. We believe that there may be some benefits to locating a tower at this location, as opposed to the current proposal, which include, it would be controlled by the town. It's a town-owned parcel. There would be easier enforcement by, because it is a town-owned parcel. The remuneration would go to the town, as opposed to a private landowner. And the proposal would likely involve a shorter tower, which would provide the service coverage that would be needed to provide, to address the deficiencies in this particular location.
We need to correct you again, if you don't mind, please. The property is in the ownership of the Little Switzerland Water District. Okay? So, that is, that's a significant correction in terms of its ownership.
With that being said, I would like to introduce to the board the president of Homeland Towers, Manny Vicente, who would like to talk to you a little bit about his company, a little bit about the investigation efforts they've done to find a sighting solution to provide coverage to this area of the town.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, council, members of the public. My name is Manny Vicente, and I'm the founder and president of Homeland Towers. I just wanted to address the board and the public this evening to give a little context and history as to why we brought this application, why we're here. We, we have a very difficult job to do. We have to provide coverage many times these days where the remaining holes are in networks, and many times they're in residential areas. And that's a very difficult job to do. It's mandated by the FCC that the carriers provide reliable coverage to their service areas. So, this is very important to the carriers, and we think to the community at large. But once again, it's a very, very difficult process and job to cite these type of facilities, or any utility facilities in residential areas. I want to make sure the board and the public knows that we didn't come here overnight. We started looking at this project about a decade ago. I think the first time I was on Dartantra Road was in 2002. And at that point, we saw the property, we looked at the area, we were looking at all possible alter, you know, locations for citing a facility. We even noticed the ham radio towers, that, the four that were existing there that were fairly tall. But that didn't drive us to conclusion that this was the place to go. We took our time, we looked again. In 2007, we sent our first proposal to the town for the water tank property that we're willing to consider here. The town gave it consideration, but denied the proposal and didn't want to move forward with it. We also know that we weren't the only ones to send the town a proposal and offer to lease that property for this purpose. We know that there were at least two other companies or providers that sent similar proposals. Because this is a very difficult area to cover, terrain-wise, and there are, you know, very limited areas that work technically. And then you compound that with the fact that there are very few people that are willing to lease to you for this purpose. It makes our job very difficult. So, we, we didn't come here easily or quickly. We understand, we've been listening to the public, we understand. I hope the public and the board understands, we have a very difficult job to do. And we understand that the public is advancing their personal interests as they should, and they have a right to. But I want to make sure everyone knows that everyone advances their own personal interest, it does not reflect the greater interests of the community, the surrounding areas, or the people that drive onto Conic and rely on the service. So, we didn't come here overnight, and we were very hesitant to bring an application. We wanted to make sure that we canceled everything out. And we've spent the better part of the last year demonstrating to this board and to the public that we've looked at a lot of alternatives. We've taken our time, we're trying to justify the need, explain why we're here, explain the technical issues, and explain that we don't have any other alternatives. So, I think we're very comfortable with what we've submitted to the board, to the public. We're very comfortable with the record. We're in a very difficult business. When we present applications, we have to be transparent, and we have to be correct and factual. And I believe everything we've submitted is in fact correct and factual, and we're very confident on what the record and what we've submitted. With that said, you know, we've listened to the people, we've listened to their concerns, we understand. We wanted to make one last effort. We did it before we filed this application. We asked the town one last time if they would consider it. And there's a reason for that, and I'm going to get to it. And we did it again just a few weeks ago, because we do believe that it might be a better location for this facility. We've worked with the RF engineers at Verizon, and because of the increased elevation at that property, which is adjacent to the current property we have a proposal on, the tower would only need to be 90 feet. We need to be tall enough to get over the trees. We estimate the average tree height to be somewhere between, your taller trees at about 75 feet, your average probably around 65 feet. So, we need to get over those trees, and there's some terrain issues to the north that we have to get over as well. So, 90 feet would be the minimum height that we would need at a facility on the water tank property. Our current application is 150 feet. 90 feet is a big difference. We also would propose a monopine or tree pine design. Now, Vincent just put up a picture of a site we just developed in Somers, New York, in Amawak on Route 35. It's a monopine. We worked very hard with the manufacturer. Not all monopines are the same. It's not a canned product. You have to design it appropriately and put some time and effort into it. This tower, this monopine is 135 feet. We're very proud of it. We, we want our sites to look good. And we think that by going to the water tank property and getting a much shorter tower to do the job, and working on a similar design that we did in Amawak, and we encourage the board and anyone to go see it, it's there, we think that that's as much as we can do to minimize some of the concerns and balance as many interests as we can. We're trying real hard. We're not, we're not in here to pick a fight with anybody. We are comfortable with our record and what we've, we've shown the board and the public. And we're trying to do our best to balance those interests of listening to the public and the board, to give them another option to consider. Vincent, if you could, show some other pictures. Now, when we design a monopine, there's a lot of factors. The branches, the size, the thickness, the color. This is 135 feet, and all these pictures were taken between 450 and 500 feet away, so that we can get some context and leap-off conditions. A 90-foot tower designed like this, at the water tank property, we think will address the coverage need, provide better service, and improve public safety to the area, give the town control over, better control over the facility, allow for public safety improvements and communication, get the revenue into the town to help offset the tax base, and get as many benefits back into the community as possible, and try and do the best we can to address the concerns the public has raised. We don't have any other alternatives. Our documentation shows that. We looked everywhere, and we've been at this for a decade. So, I think this is the best we can do. I hope that the public would consider this. I hope that the town board will consider this, and I hope that, you know, we can, we can get everybody to seriously think about which site is better, because I think this is all we can do at this point. So, I just wanted to make sure people understood the history, the fact that we have been careful, the fact that we've taken our time, and that everything we produced and submitted to this board, we're comfortable with. But at the same time, we want to do everything we can to try and balance the interests and address some of the concerns that the public has. So, I know that the town hasn't made a, hasn't made a firm commitment. We know that. We're trying, and we hope that the board, like I said, they can advance their own personal interests, but there are other interests to consider here. And we want the board to remember that. We're here to answer any questions tonight, and more importantly, we're here to listen to the public and other comments that they may have.
Okay, so for the record, are you going to be, are you prepared tonight to address, to help the public understand the coverage that this tower provides? Is some, I don't see a radio frequency expert here, and Ron's not here, so we don't have the counterbalance here.
Well, we're-
But I think that we need to understand, is this, what, what is the coverage area? Really, the public needs to understand that, so.
It's our understanding from Verizon that this site at 90 feet would work for them.
Okay, work, what do you mean by work?
It would give comparable coverage to where we are today at 150 feet.
Okay, so, but again, so-
And we're prepared to demonstrate that. We just don't have it this evening.
And, okay, so it could very well be that we'll have to carry this over to next month, where we'll make sure that the appropriate representation, the representatives are here to speak to, because the public is absolutely entitled to understand issues of coverage, issues of, you know, again, are we focusing on covering that half-mile trek on the Conic, or are we, you know, are you filling a larger gap? What is the coverage? We're just not prepared, for us to give the information, it really would be beholden to be.
That's a very fair comment. And we would certainly expect that this to be carried over to the next month. Whether or not this is something that the public may be favorably disposed towards, we would be able to provide that documentation. We would certainly expect that Mr. Grave would evaluate it as well. If this is something that the public is not favorably disposed towards, we are still looking to provide a supplemental submission with respect to the 23 Dartantra Drive proposal that would address all the comments raised at the last public hearing.
Okay, at a minimum, can you tell me how tall the water tower is, so that I have context and the neighbors have context? When you say a 90-foot tower at the water, how does that compare to the water tower that's there?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Vincent Xavier, I'm the senior project manager for Homeland Towers. I was at the site, I actually walked up to it, and it appears to be approximately 50 feet tall itself.
Okay. And the land area associated with the compound that you're going to need at the base of it?
Ideally, we would put the tower behind the water tank.
Okay.
So, the 50-feet water tank would, from certain angles, almost completely shield the entire compound area at the bottom, and a good portion of the monopine that wouldn't have any branches on it. Especially since you're looking from a lower elevation up, I would expect that you would only see the, where the branches start and above, you know, it would be 40 feet above approximately, but you're looking from lower elevation, so you may not see the full 40, you may see 25.
And the question would be, have you done a float test at this location?
No, and we don't have the-
And should we be doing, should we really be doing that? I mean, I, I agree with you, let's get some feedback tonight to see if there's any interest, but you're, you don't have a whole lot of time left before the leaves start coming on, so.
Understood. We don't have the authority to enter onto the property in order to conduct that balloon test as of yet. If, we don't have the authority to bring the equipment on in order to do that balloon test. Assuming that we do get some favorable comp, feedback, we would approach the town, enter into an entry and testing agreement, provide the requisite insurances, so that we would be able to conduct a balloon float, if that was the request of the board.
I wasn't sure if any time during the 10 years that you spoke of, you might have done the test previously.
The indication in the past from carriers has been that the site works very well.
Okay.
We're prepared to demonstrate that, and we're prepared to do visuals and whatever is needed. But in the current situation, we're not sure if this is something that the public or the town wants to move forward with. And one of the reasons why we're still working on the response is, we want to hear what else the public has to hear and do a comprehensive response. So, we're kind of, we want to give you the information, give you as much as we can, but we're really limited now until we understand that this is something that is interesting to the public and to the board and to the town, and that we should further investigate.
Okay.
And my question is, with going down to the 90-foot, will this prohibit any future co-location?
No, one of the things, the 90 feet works for Verizon. Verizon has the most difficult service problem in the area. Being above the tree line is important for that reason, and we think it will offer co-location to future carriers as well, because their networks are a little different than Verizon. We think that there's possibilities of that. And we also, if there is any hesitation for co-location or concern about co-location, what's normally done in our business, and it was done here in Somers as well, that tower has a flange. It was requested by the planning board and the zoning board in Somers, that it has a flange that could be extended should it need to, and then redesign the branches. So, if that's ever a concern, we're trying to do the- So if that's ever a concern, we're trying to do the lowest tower possible. But if it is a concern for the boards, we can design it so that it could be extended should there be a need in the future. That's up to the boards, that's not our desire. Right now, this application is Verizon's application, and we're really focused on what their needs are and what they need. But if that's a concern, that's the way to address it in our industry.
Any other questions? Okay. So why don't, we're going to open this up for anybody in the public? Again, folks, if we can just remind you, you have to sign in, so we have it for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy-
Sorry, while Mr. Braun is speaking, anybody else who would like to speak can actually sign in now. All right, just so that, we'll call you and we'll have you in order. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy Braun. I'm an attorney, and I'm also a resident of the Little Switzerland neighborhood. I had the privilege of speaking with you at the last public hearing, and we went through quite a presentation, as you may well recall. Initially, I was going to come up here to do some housekeeping, which I intend to do, but I just wanted to respond briefly to the comments made by the President of Homeland Towers. These are not prepared comments, these are just reactive to those comments. He's right, the interests of each side, every side looks to advance its own interests. That's true. But the interests of Homeland, it appears, are interests of obfuscation as opposed to transparency. We have seen time and again, based on the initial applications that they presented, that the visual resource evaluation that they initially presented was full of obfuscations. It showed things that you couldn't see as opposed to things you could see. Alternate sites were rejected in the initial application with the language rejected by RF engineer with no basis, no reason, nothing. It was only after the community got involved and the board reviewed this thing further that the board decided they wanted more information as to what the reasons for the rejection of those alternate sites. And I still maintain that there's been no response to date to Mr. Grave's letter in October of two thousand and twelve with respect to the elegant alternate-two-site solution. We have heard nothing from them for months, and I would suggest to you that that needs to be explored further. The presentation with respect to the water tower is something that really is kind of premature at this point. It's not ripe for review. There's been no request from the community for this tower to be considered. I think that they've had sufficient time at this point to have presented a response to Mr. Grave's letter of October. They still have not done so. Now, we hear that they may do so at the next meeting. Obfuscation and delay seem to be part and parcel of their modus operandi, from my perspective. Now, let's go back to a couple of things I addressed the last time, but I just think they bear repeating this time. Homeland Towers is not entitled to seamless coverage. The Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six does not require or mandate that seamless coverage be provided. In all of Homeland Towers' presentations and submissions, they constantly refer to seamless coverage. All that's required as a matter of law is safe and adequate coverage, based on the coverage maps that we saw last time, based on a lot of the evidence that has been presented previously. They have safe and adequate coverage in the area. The Telecommunications Act contemplates, Congress contemplated, that there were going to be some dead spots, that you weren't going to be able to cover every place, because if you were, you'd have a cell phone tower every third of a mile on the Teconic State Parkway in order to obtain seamless coverage. It's not going to happen, folks, because that's not what Congress intended. So they've got coverage now, they have a mature network by their own admission, they're attempting to fill that network up, as their own engineer had said a few hearings ago, one of the review hearings. So I think that seamless coverage is not certainly something that they're not entitled to. It's safe and adequate coverage. We still have the issue of the single carrier tower, or the danger of a single carrier tower. We have seen, based on their presentations, that the one hundred and forty-six-foot center line is the minimum that they state is needed in order to effectuate coverage to the target area. Everything below that, based on their own maps, shows limited to zero coverage in some instances. So co-location is highly unlikely, perhaps at the one hundred and thirty-six-foot line, but other than that, it strains credulity to believe that any carrier is going to want to go that loading, given the topography of the area, to get limited to zero coverage. It just doesn't make sense. Finally, we also have the issue of aesthetics, whether it's at the tower, at the water tower, or whether it's the current application, aesthetics are still a problem, devaluation of homes is a problem. As far as the aesthetics are concerned, that as a matter of law is a ground to deny an application. As Mr. James, who is going to speak after me, will present to you, the aesthetics, when done the right way, using current technologies and industry-standard technologies, will show you that this thing is going to stick out like a sore thumb. Now, what I'd like to do is just a little housekeeping. Last time I was here, I had made a presentation, and while, and we had presented binders to you. Now, while some of the bind, some of the, or actually all of the documentation is contained in the binders, it's in various places. So what I wanted to do to make it easy for the board was to provide you with a copy of what I presented last time for inclusion in the binder, which is all together. So if I may approach and just-
Just give you these two binders, if you just take one, pass it around, helpful. I also have, I also have originals, some additional letters presented by residents of the town in opposition to the originals, and a copy for everybody in the binder, if you just pass that around. I'll-
Just bringing Mr. Meyer up to speed.
That's okay.
I guess to record reflex, I'm not here.
So, just to recapitulate, essentially, we've got the same problems today that we had two months ago, that we had at the beginning of this whole thing when the review hearings came. They're entitled to safe and adequate coverage, not seamless coverage. There's a danger of a single carrier tower. There are issues of aesthetics, there are issues of devaluation of properties, there are alternatives which Mr. Grave has proposed as far as a two-site solution, to which there's been no response, and I find it interesting that there has been no response since October. Essentially, there's been a tremendous amount of obfuscation here, and I think transparency is mandatory in a situation like this, and I hope you will see through the glass. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. James. As you may recall, at the last public hearing, it was suggested that we present, well, we asked Mr. James to present some simulations based on the industry standards that he claims should have been used in the initial visual resource evaluation. So we have Mr. James here to present that to you. So without any further ado, I'd like to present Mr. James.
Actually, I'm going to have to interrupt, because I don't think you signed in, and somebody else did sign in in your-
He did, I signed.
Oh, you did sign?
I did.
You signed in for him. Thank you, I appreciate that. Just trying to keep everybody in order.
Randy's got it covered. Okay, I have a, some visuals that Kathy's going to bring up.
I like that visual.
That's a hell of a power.
Just to say, after Mr. James is finished, we have copies of his presentation also for inclusion in the binder.
Okay, great, thanks Kathy. Go to the first slide. Okay, so, in review, I was here in December, and I talked about how the VRE that the applicant produced was deficient in a number of different ways. And the four major ways were the image quality, the quality of the photographs they used, in many cases were blurry, there's glare.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you've already covered this, we don't need to have it covered again.
Just read this one page.
Thank you. There's just a lot of people here, we want, we just, the record's covered.
I understand. The lens selection, they used a wide-angle lens. The photo simulation method they used, which was, they superimposed a tower using Photoshop, they did not include the sheds, the other portions of the actions, including the disturbance in the road, and then the viewpoint selection. Kathy, can you go to the next slide, please? Now, this EVA suggested that the residents go and say, well, if it doesn't look like this, it's going to look like this, well, what is it going to look like? And you've suggested that they produce photo simulations, and they asked me to do that. The simulations, I produced two of them. Simulations that we produce are verifiable and auditable, meaning if you ask for the models, we can give them to you. And what we've done is, we've compared them with the equivalent simulations in the applicant's application. Next, please. Okay, so this is viewpoint one, from the applicant's application. Existing conditions with the area circle. Next. This is their photo simulation. This is at the end of Dartantra Drive. This is the driveway that you would enter to go into the site. Next. Okay, this is taken a little further down that drive. Remember, this is a shared drive. The neighbor uses this drive and actually owns it. There's an easement to get to the property. This would be how you enter onto their property, continue to the right to the neighbor's house. Next slide. Okay, so what we've done, and this deserves a little bit of explanation, is we've built a three-D model of, three-D digital model of the tower. We've also built three-D digital models of the sheds, fencing, the area of disturbance and the road. What you do is you build that in three-D, you set up a camera in your computer to mimic the camera that takes this photograph. So we have to know the precise location, we have to know the precise lens that the photograph is taken. And then you render that image in the computer, and then you merge the two together. You also have to think about taking out trees that were removed in the process. So what you see here is that the tower will affect the line of the view. And I'll talk a little bit more about how these things are normally evaluated, but it pierces the tree line, and it's a substantial structure at this point. Kathy, next. This is viewpoint twelve, it's from across the Teconic on Old Sylvan Lake Road. This is their existing conditions photograph. Next, please. This is their proposed conditions photograph. This is what I call a photo rendering, not a photo simulation. It's an artist interpretation using photograph as a media. Next, please. This is from, from Old Sylvan Lake Road slightly to the south of that. This is the Teconic in front of us. This is, you'll see that the tower clearly breaks the tree line. The view from the Teconic would likely be similar to this, because we're actually very close to the Teconic from this point. Next. So I like photo simulations, because they read for both professional and laypersonal light. You don't have to be a professional to understand them. However, there are criteria that professionals use when you're evaluating visual impacts. Next, please. So they are first form. You look at the image, and you say, well, what is the form of the view that we're looking at here? It's a low-density residential area with wooded rolling hills. And so what is this tower due to the form of that view? It introduces a new form that contrasts with the existing form. Next, please. What is the line? What is, the line of a view most often is where the ground meets the horizon. You could also have vertical lines if there are cliffs, or the Teconic is another line in these views. It's a long linear part of the view. And here, this is, the action pierces the tree line. When you evaluate impacts, visual impacts, you look at, well, what is it, how does it contrast the existing view? Here, there's a serious piercing of the line of the viewpoint. Next, please. Color. The action's not camouflage, the colors here are, you know, typical winter brown and gray. Action's not camouflage, but its colors are consistent with other development in the neighborhood. Next, please. Texture. Grasses are fine, trees are coarse, development is coarser still. This introduces a coarser texture to the trees that we see. Next, please. Scale and spatial dominance. In this area, we have trees, we have single-family homes. This action, the tower, is much larger than the trees, it's much larger than the homes, introduces, contrasts not only to the views, but to the neighborhood itself. Next. I think if you look at these images and evaluate them professionally, you can see that there are significant visual impacts, especially in regards to line and scale and spatial dominance. Next, please. I think it's clear that there is a significant visual impact on these views, these close-up views that were evaluated. One view is a private view, the other is a public view. And I believe both of these views should matter to this EVA. And as you know, I think, aesthetics are a reasonable grounds for denial of a permit. Yeah, that's what I have, but I also want to say another thing in terms of editorializing, is that you can go through that entire VRE, and you can go page after page after page, and not get a real sense of what the impact is going to be, especially on these closed-in views. And the whole point of doing this sort of analytical work is so that you can make informed decisions, and so that you get this deck full of materials that essentially tells a different story than what's actually going to happen. And it's something that this group shouldn't have had to pay me to do this work. This is, I think, it was not necessary. This should have come from the applicant. The applicant likes to say, everybody has their own self-interest. In my field, this work is done the exact same way, whether it's for the applicant or if it's done for the opposition. There are certain professional standards that you just have to maintain as a professional. There is a right way of doing it. And what you receive from this applicant, at least in the VRE, is not the right way to do it. And I hope I've helped you in terms of the information that you have here today. Thank you.
Very enlightening. I have at least one question here. How close was, what was the closest residence to the spot that you were standing in?
The closest residence, I can't tell you in feet, but it's very close. And here-
My question gets at, would, is somebody driving on-
Right.
On Old Sylvan Lake Road going to see this, or is it really that there's a resident who's now, who's probably not noticed for this public hearing, by the way, because they're with outside of the five-hundred feet?
This is in front of seventy Old Sylvan Lake, and the gentleman, I don't know his name, Randy and Kathy took me there, and this is in front of this house down on the road.
Okay.
All right, and so you have to climb up, his house is higher up, so I mean, it's the distance, his driveway is-
So this is the view out of his house?
Well, no, this is on the road, right? And his house is higher up, and there's a driveway that goes up.
Okay.
But, so that he's set back, I would guess, at least eighty, a hundred feet from the road. But this is the public view from Old Sylvan Lake, on the shoulder of the road.
Okay.
Okay? And the other one was, you know, her house is sixty, fifty feet up the driveway to the right.
Okay.
I could confirm that, you know, those distances.
Just trying to understand from-
Sure.
From where you were standing.
Understood.
Obviously, Old Sylvan Lake Road is a long road, so, okay. Questions from other board members?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Palmer, you next? I'm not sure who signed in next.
Over here, we have the sign.
Oh, okay.
Hey, you're up.
I'm Dave Groffmiller, I live on Dartantra Drive. I've been along for this ride for the whole year that we've been coming to these meetings. You know, we've heard some larger issues, right, like aesthetics, we heard about today, we talked about profits, we've talked about, you know, house values, I mean-
I hate to interrupt you, but folks, can you please turn your cell phones off?
So, you know, last time, there was even an issue raised at the end about the easement, or if this twelve-foot-wide driveway was going to be from the road. And what I found funny was, I live on the street, I walk to the end almost every day with my two- day with my two kids. I have a four-year-old and a three-year-old. The people sitting here who had just presented what this compound was going to look like, road included, said, no, it's going to be from the road. If you guys walk down there, it's impossible to have, there's, I doubt there's 12 feet between the two driveways of road frontage. So there's no way the road, you know, that their access road could be from Dartantra. My main issue, though, is that it's been two months because we were given plenty of time for the applicant to respond to all the questions. And then all we got was a response of location. And again, the location, and I totally understand that, you know, you could serve the area. We're talking about serving maybe similarly with the location. But the things that were brought up last time that weren't addressed were things such as Mr. Graef talked about their software models and how it's widely known in the industry that their software models are flawed in showing actual need, right? He also talked about it's great in the industry if the applicant actual, does actual drive tests, showing the level of service in, in DBM or whatever along the Teconic versus we did drive tests of people, oh, I drove this distance and didn't drop a call. Similarly, he talked about, you know, is there any proof that their threshold service of negative 86 DBM is actually what's necessary to provide, you know, the coverage that we need? You know, we also talked about the fact that three different cellular companies are apparently merging with other companies. So there's going to be a bunch of antenna, you know, on top of towers decommissioned. And we said, well, jeez, now all these areas where they can't co-locate at a, at the perfect height may now be open. All of these issues that were raised two months ago, and here we are, you know, we're still haggling over location and aesthetics when, you know, I haven't even been proven that there's really a lapse in coverage that's necessary to put a tower anywhere near the area. And so I, I just don't know why two months have passed and we haven't had an answer to the most basic question, which is, we're trying to build a tower to cover an area that there isn't proof needs covering. So I'm just, you know, I'm hoping we don't drag it on for another year trying to find that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Chris Kierl. I live at 43 Ensbroke Boulevard. I'm actually, my house is in front of the water tower. And I believe the water tower is 40 feet high, 40, 50 feet, right about there. So I can't, my neighbor did an excellent job representing the current application, but I want to talk a little about the proposed newer one, the, the water tower. We fought this, I think, back in 2009, 2010, and there was practically, it was a landslide. Not one of our neighbors wanted this in the tower. There's also a road to, going away from my house to left, there's, there's an easement there to get up to a water tower that, that our neighbor shares. I don't know if they're here tonight. But anyway, it was a proposal. We went to meetings, we went to multiple meetings, we met with Hickman multiple times, and it went absolutely nowhere. So I would urge the board to not allow that to progress if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so you have information still to get to us. The question of the day at this point is, is March going to be appropriate? Because February is a very short month. So we're already at February 12th. Are, if we get, is another 12 days, are we going to have a full package of the information that was requested?
I have every indication to believe from my team that we'll be able to respond within the 12 days.
Okay.
We will coordinate a conference call with Mr. Graef. We were hoping to get a little bit more feedback with respect to whether this would be a viable option this evening. Again, I have not had the opportunity to review this documentation. It was not submitted in, in advance of this meeting this evening.
Copy given?
Yes. I was provided with a copy tonight. I will have my consultant review this, this proposal, this VRE. But I just would like to say very briefly that, as was indicated by Mr. Vicente, we're very confident in the visual analysis that we did submit. It's consistent with the methodology and the protocol that is used in thousands of these applications. It's something that is the methodology that this board has approved in prior applications. It is the methodology that has been approved by the New York State Historic Preservation Office, which reviews these types of applications for that specific purpose. Again, we will review this. We will provide some clarification on some of the comments that Mr. James had with respect to the original VRA that was submitted by our consultant, and we will certainly address this as well.
Okay. There's a significant difference between your visuals and theirs. So we're going to be looking forward to seeing your response to that.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that whatever the applicant brings back in March, if we're going to adjourn to March, has to do with this application and not with the water tower site. I don't think that any discussion of the water tower site should happen here. It has nothing to do with this application. And unless we, as a neighborhood, ask Mr. Hickman, to ask them to please give us a presentation about the water tower, we shouldn't even be talking about it. It's a non-issue. It's up to us. They have a very short memory, obviously, because we fought this in 2007, 2008. And it was unanimous, pretty much, that this was not an option, and nobody wanted it.
I believe they just needed to hear that from the neighbors tonight, that there hasn't been a turnover within the neighborhood and that there continues to be significant concern about consideration of that site. I think that's all they, they needed to hear that.
I just don't want to come back in March and hear more about the water tower and nothing about what they should have done for this meeting regarding this application because that's a waste of our time, it's a waste of your time.
Right. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so seeing no additional comment tonight, again, you'll have another opportunity next month. So you're, you guys are agreeing that March is appropriate? All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn until March 12th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I-
Can I just ask one question? So just so the record is clear, we are not to pursue the water tank and it's clear from the neighbors' eyes?
It appears to us, I believe, that there's not a whole lot of interest from the neighbors in pursuing the water-
We just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you, folks. Can we find Aziz? That's a good idea, actually. Hey Pam! We're feeling rejected. We don't have Pam. Can I bother you with that side? Can't see Jenna's here. Jenna? Yeah. The library should have closed.
We need a one-minute, two-minute anyway.
Yeah. Oh, never mind, never mind Pam.
She made a guest appearance.
She's here. Thank you.
She doesn't like shell towers, though.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry. Thank you. Hope the minutes were helpful.
I have to buy a few.
No, at least it doesn't really, really-
I'll take the upper level. Can we put their lights on? Looks half-drunk.
Soon as we can get the doors shut. And we have Aziz back and Tara back, so. You're here. There's not much left.
Okay, okay. You can move it fast.
I just got to wait.
Let's continue. Item number three, Appeal 3613 Schneider. John Schneider, 14 Pierce, Our Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep a 980 square foot fabric garage to be relocated so that it meets the required setbacks pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay, Mr. Schneider, last we met, you've gotten your cast off. Good, progress. But last we met, we did have a discussion about the use of the garage. And your expectation was that you were only going to need it for another year because you were transitioning to other garages. We did ask you specifically to provide a floor plan of your expected use. Did you bring something with you? Okay?
On it?
Please?
It's real high-tech, so I don't know if you can be able to-
All right, so there's a 29-foot entrance? Let me just make sure I'm understanding this. The 29 feet, no, wait a second, it can't be 29 feet. Where's the in? Oh, it is.
That's the inside.
It is, because it's the zipper. Okay.
The inside is smaller than the outside.
Okay. So it's 31 feet across, 29 feet this way. Where's the entrance itself? It is that one? Okay.
If it's third, it's, it loses about a foot. It's 30 on the outside this way and it's 32.
All right.
But this, I give you the, you said-
Right.
That's the floor on the inside.
Yep, no, we, we wanted to understand how-
It's, I mean, it's roughly, it's not, you know, it's not perfect. And you can't have anything squished in there, so it'll take you three hours to get something out.
Right, I understand. All right, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from board members? Speaking of cell phones. All right. This, the floor plan that you gave us, you, we had seen what was in the structure. Is that coming out and this going in? Or, or is this stuff being added?
You know, sometimes I take stuff in and out. Today I was in there.
Okay.
I had to go get wood pellets, so I had to make sure I was putting stuff in there.
Okay.
Sometimes it changes. Sometimes the weather doesn't permit me to get back there and get stuff in, so it has to sit in the other room.
Okay. All right, so any additional comments or questions from board members? If not, is there anyone who wants, who wants to speak for or against the application from John Schneider, 14 Pierce, Our Road, to requesting a variance to be allowed to keep a 960-square foot fabric garage? Seeing none, do we want to close and reserve a decision? Because I think we have to evaluate-
Yes, I agree with that proposal.
One question real quick. You said you had another, there's another-
There's another fabric?
-coming down? You taking that down?
I was thinking about it, yeah. Probably going to, but just not until the weather breaks. Because I got rid of a lot of stuff, so I was thinking about taking it out and selling it, getting some money back.
All right.
Now, how long do you plan to keep this particular temporary structure? Because even though we have talked about it, it has a limited lifespan. So what lifespan are you looking at for the structure?
Well, I mean, has, the material itself has a long lifetime. I mean, it's, I think it's warranted for like 20 years, but-
It's, it would be a permanent variance. It's not-
We discussed it, and again, we can reserve the decision on that. We've discussed whether or not we want people, you know, something in the statute permits us to go back and look at these structures and make sure they're being properly maintained for the high winds and stuff that we're getting.
And it's an appropriate structure for it to be used to park vehicles in it.
One of my neighborhoods, I took the fabric off and now it's covered with vinyl siding.
You won't be worried about that because-
I'm just saying.
I don't like looking at it the way it is myself, to be the truth, but. And this, this one that I have is actually, it's a very high-grade one. It's not like these ones they buy on Home Depot where they let you get four or five years out of them and they rip.
Right.
I mean, all that snow and that rain and that heavy stuff was, it's on them and, you know, it slides off when it's ready.
It's not meant for that weight.
Yeah, these, these ones that I have, I mean, the pipes are two-and-a-half-inch pipes structure. I mean, it's not-
I don't have a question. I mean, that's something that, you know, that can be considered in the decision, or maybe that's just, you know, statutory thing.
All right, so do I have a motion to close and reserve a decision till next month? Or for, within our 62-days clock?
So moved.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, so we're gonna, we have to have a discussion or kind of throw some ideas around in terms of where we think we're going to go with this.
We should go in the files.
Yeah, we're going to keep the floor plan in the file.
Sure.
And then, you can check back with Pam the end of this month, beginning of next month, whether it'll be on next month's agenda.
Are you going to send me a letter or?
Oh, yeah, you don't have to be here for the decision. That's fine.
Oh, well, I'm starting to like you guys. You know, kind of miss it when I don't go to a meeting, you know? So it'll be like March 12th?
We have 62, you have 62 days. We have 62 days.
That's what I'm saying. You gotta give us, we might, we might need next month to just have a discussion about it because this is, this is a tough one, so.
That's fine.
All right?
I don't mind.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I do have one thing I just wanted to ask you about.
Yeah?
I've got a message for you. I don't know if you got it.
No.
Have you seen it? I, I needed you to call me about something.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate to discuss it here, but-
Is it related to this application?
Um, it has nothing to do with what I'm trying to do, but it has something to do-
Okay.
The pictures.
Okay, leave a, leave a message with Pam for your number and I'll try to get in touch with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, item number four is a public hearing. Appeal 3615 Hopewell Filling Station. Michael Gillespie, representing Hopewell Filling Station, Route 82376. Hopewell Junction is requesting a 19-foot rear line variance for a proposed 2374-square-foot commercial building, a 9-foot rear line landscape buffer variance, as well as an 8% impervious coverage variance pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulation, Section 194-116b1 and Section 194-116b2 respectively. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor? Okay, for the record, we need to, apparently there was some confusion with the lead agency notice by the planning board. The planning board is doing a coordinated review. So I just need, and apparently notice was sent to this board, but it did not get to us within the 30 days that they were looking for comment from us. So I need to just ascertain that the, this board has no objection to the planning board serving as lead agency.
It's fine with me.
I have no objection.
Okay. So you have your, we have our coverage in that regard. So with that in mind, you are in the midst of a public hearing with the planning board for the site plan approval. And so they have sent you to the zoning board for the various variances, but I think we need to understand from John, if you can give us some guidance, who closes first and who's on second and, you know, things of that sort.
And we've talked about it at our staff meeting and it comes up on a regular basis when you secretly contemplate a coordinated review. So when you have an application in front of a planning board, an application in front of a zoning board, we're supposed to try to coordinate the review so that you don't close one public hearing, say, for example, a ZBA public hearing on variances, and then the planning board goes ahead and identifies a couple more variances that requires the ZBA to reopen. So we try to go down two railroad tracks at the same time. So we, whoever is the slower board, that's the one we have to wait till they finish up. And at that point, we can do our coordinated review and decision and make our secret determination by the lead agent. But we do that, Mr. Gillespie's been an expert at seeing that done before these boards. Maybe.
Kind of. All right, so, so that's correct. Where we stand now is we're in adjourned public hearing with the public, with the, with the planning board. We are officially on for adjourned public hearing for the second meeting in March.
Okay.
This whole issue of process was brought up the last planning board. So we are on for this officially, again, the second meeting in March, which is the week after this, this board meets in March. But we were also on for the first meeting in March for discussion and secret determination. Okay?
Okay.
So that the board will have an opportunity, the planning board as lead agency will have the opportunity to make their secret determination. We can come slide back to here, having any issues, obviously, with the various variances we're seeking here. This board can make a determination and then we can go back to the planning board the following week. So that, that was the discussion that was had. So that's-
So our, our expectation would be tonight, we offer it for anybody who might have any comment to- We offer it for anybody who might have any comment tonight, any questions from... Additional questions from board members. But we will adjourn tonight. We will make our... We will close our public hearing and make our determination in March. Correct?
Well, lots of time to leave the public hearing open. You can always close at the meeting where you make the decision. But you're just waiting... You hope that another board doesn't cause the board that's closed first to rethink their application after reopening their public hearing.
Is it possible? I guess that's the real issue. How much gelling has gone in on your plan before then for the site plan? Is it... May it change a lot when you meet with them in March?
I... Then that's a good question. I think what happens is enough input was put at the time with the planning board that this layout is a reflection of a couple of meetings with the planning board. I think I can go on record that I'm confident, in fact, we can get through here. This layout, which actually has triggered us into certain area variances, is a function of really planning board request. So, I think we're okay there. That's my point.
I guess it's still up there. You got one of the driveway coming in off 82 and one not?
Again, yes. There is an issue with regards to the access coming off of 82. That's a DOT called. The planning board has pushed that. I have set up this in terms of the lot coverage to accommodate that. It's an extra half a percent or something in terms of the driveway. So I have accommodated that in our variance request for our impervious coverage. You know, we were going back and forth a little bit with DOT. Our traffic consultant, which is also the town traffic consultant, doesn't feel that we need a full impact study in terms of a traffic analysis for this. The DOT came back as of recently today and said, listen, you know, we'd like to have numbers. It almost seemed like they were asking for that.
To cover their files.
Yeah. There was a reply by the town consultant today, so we're working through that. But again, for what purposes we're here tonight, it kind of covers that issue, you know?
Okay.
So...
For the purpose of... Actually, we have a new alternate member, Mary Semenara. So for... Give her the opportunity to review. And for the public that might be watching or here tonight that might want to comment, if you could very quickly run through what the proposal is...
Yep.
And explain what each of the averancy requests are.
Alright. So effectively, this is the existing station at the corner of 82 and 376, right in the middle of town. Okay? And over the past, I guess, year, you'll notice there was some work done at the site in terms of removal of existing tanks. That was done under DEC mandate. They were removed, they were replaced. A new canopy was installed, and the site is operational. I guess we can look at this as a Phase Two whereabouts. The canopy's gonna remain. The pumps are gonna remain. There's no change there. But the existing building is proposed to be removed, and a new convenience mart is proposed to be installed. Okay? The existing convenience mart... Let's do the numbers. Is approximately 1,300 square feet. The proposed convenience mart ends up being about 2,300 square feet, which adds about 1,000 square feet overall. Okay? We saw it under our requirements in terms of building expansion, 50%, including the canopy and so forth. But because of the unique nature and shape of this parcel, it's a corner lot. And if you take a look at the left-hand side of the drawing, there's a lot of dead space in the back corner of this parcel, which really isn't effectively being used. So, traffic circulation, aesthetics, effectively, again, because this is a gateway into the hamlet, a number of considerations. The idea was to take the building and basically pull it back and get it into the corner. So on the right-hand side, you'll see the footprint of the proposed building. And what it does, it really opens up the parcel quite a bit. Okay? It opens up the corner. Alright? But with that, we need certain area variances. Okay? And that's why we're here tonight. We need a rear yard variance. We need a lot coverage variance. And there's also a requirement that you have a minimum rear yard 10-foot landscape buffer requirement, and we're encroaching upon that. That's already being approached upon. It's just with the location of the building, it becomes a bit more. Probably the most affected party here is M&amp;T Bank.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? You're really not gonna see this from 82. You're not gonna see it from 376. It'll... Aesthetically, it should look a lot better from those two viewpoints, but M&amp;T is the one that gets most affected by this. And in that location, that's basically the drive-through location. So, just so this board knows too, the ARB had concerns about, even though it was being pushed back, and M&amp;T is the affected party, issues regarding aesthetics and things like that. So, if you'll notice on this plan here, we show a line of evergreens. Okay? There is existing evergreens there and out. There's a fence that's basically half fallen down.
Yeah, they're on the other side of the fence.
And it's all on M&amp;T property. So, at the building location, we're two foot off the property line. There's not much we can do there. But from there on out, we do propose a line of trees to provide some buffering. One of the other requests too, that the ARB requested, which the planning board went along with too, is we originally had shown the refuse enclosure along the line where the M&amp;T bank is. We moved it over to the other side.
Okay.
Tomato-tomata, it's probably better off on the other side. Really only from an access standpoint for oil and their truck and things like that.
Yeah, but you're putting it now against residents as opposed to being against a commercial property.
That...
So that might be a concern to that neighbor.
That neighbor...
But again, it definitely... That neighbor, I'm sure, was noticed, so...
He was noticed. It's a residence. It's basically abandoned building at this point.
And it is a commercial zone. And though it has a house on it, it is a commercial zone. Okay. And I don't... I think it's not in use right now anyway. But obviously, somebody owns that property and it is... Could serve as a residential use. Not anymore. It lost it. Okay. Good. Alright. That makes it easier.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Yeah. So it is in a commercial zone.
Alright. Any questions from board members?
The chain link fence between M&amp;T, is that...
Yep.
That's real eyesore. Is that... That's part of M&amp;T, or is that...
The elbow landscaping and the existing fence is all any M&amp;T property. Now, that being said, at the last planning board meeting, there was some discussion about when we send certified mailings out, M&amp;T, the mailing goes up to Buffalo. That's their headquarters. That's where the taxes are paid. I think it's a fair point. We need to be able to get in contact with them to have the ability to redo that fence, which our applicant has absolutely no problem with.
Okay.
But we gotta talk to the real estate person here who's in charge of this site.
Okay.
We are doing that, just so you're aware.
Any other questions? If not, is there any... Go ahead.
Just one comment. I mean, I sort of like the line of trees along there by M&amp;T Bank, because it creates a line of sight, which actually prevents you going and seeing behind the building. Who knows what's gonna happen with that two feet? It probably won't be maintained or anything. Would it be appropriate to do a similar thing on the other corner? Where I guess the... Your trash containers are now? I mean, to create the same kind of thing, that you're not looking behind that two-foot... This is a suggestion. I'm not sure that it's of much importance to me, but... It would seem to sort of corral your point of view and make it better from both street angles if it was similar.
I don't want to speak for half the ARB, but I think the thought was that M&amp;T is an active site, where the other site is not. We can meet our side yard 10-foot setback requirement at that location. So we... You'll notice...
Okay.
We meet that requirement. We're not looking for a variance on that side. We can meet that natural buffer. Now, there are, as strange as it seems, because we're in the middle of town here, there are some fairly decent deciduous trees there. I think if we thought about putting those in there, we'd probably have to rip those out.
Yeah.
So, it really... It wasn't brought up by the planning board, but...
And I got confused. Like, I was looking at the wrong line there for your line, property line, I think, from here. I can't read the words.
There's also a...
I thought it was the one that's going right next to your building again.
Yeah. There's also... There's a sewer line and a water line that runs down there. There's an easement, which we've been allowed to encroach a bit on as long as we don't encroach upon the pipe. That line goes out, and it goes to the pump station over at Mario's, and then runs up 82. So there's some utility issues there in terms of the easement, which I don't know if the town's gonna be able to...
I take my comment back.
Entuse about.
Alright. Any other questions for board members? If not...
What are the entrances? Are still in... Under discussion? Or have you... Are you bringing both the entrances from 82, or are you bringing something from 376 also?
Alright. Here's what I absolutely know without question. The entrance on the northeast location, which is the furthest away from the intersection with 82 and 376, that will remain as a...
Pam has the pointer for you.
Is there a pointer, or are you actually a TV show?
Both for entering and exit.
Yes, it does. They're fresh. The yellow ones.
Laser.
It's a phaser structure.
There you go.
Nice.
We aim for please.
Okay. Right here. This entry here is proposed to remain as an in and out.
Okay.
Okay? This is the existing entrance also, that also currently is in, in and out. But if you ever try to take a left-hand... You gotta do it late at night when nobody's...
Left hand coming out.
Right. So, the intent here is to do a right-hand in and restrict this to a right-hand out. Okay? There will be no left-hand turns to be able to tap in here. Okay? This here is the entry off of 376, which is right now in discussions with DOT. Okay? And really, the reason that came into play, we show here... You can see this, this kind of outline here. This is a truck turning radius for the purposes of, you know, the gas trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so forth. So we show that we can make this turn, these turning radiuses, but it's not very convenient. Okay? Right now, you'll see, we can't make that turn. The trucks come in here, they stop, they have to do a couple of twists and turns and make their way out. So we can make this turn here, but this was a real push by the planning board so that if deliveries have to be made, they can come down, basically, come down 82, take a right on Unity, take the left 376, and it's kind of a slide right onto the site. Boom. Boom. So, the purpose really for that access was the issue... Was more of an issue of deliveries. Okay? And maybe take a little bit of action away from these locations here. But in terms of the entrances, that's what's proposed. Okay? This, depending on DOT, may not become the fruition. This will always remain two-way, and there will be restrictions at this entrance here to prohibit left-hand turns.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the Hopewell... The appeal from Hopewell Filling Station for various variances to the commercial site at the corner of Route 82 and 376? So, okay. So seeing none, do we close the public hearing or adjourn it?
I think we adjourn it, right?
Adjourn it.
Adjourn it.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Motion adjourned to March 12th, beating.
Second.
On favor?
Right.
Alright.
Good.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Alright. Item number five. Appeal 3616 Barnum/Keegan. Lori Barnum and Kevin Keegan, 75 West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use in order to build an addition onto the side and rear of the dwelling and a 45-foot front line variance for an existing house, and a 26-foot rear line variance for a pre-existing garage pursuant to Sections 194-121 and 194-123, respectively.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
On favor? Hi. Okay. So, we did see this last month, but just for the purpose of any of the neighbors who might be...
Against them.
Interested in what you're doing.
Right.
And we have you explain your... The application. Obviously, this is an older house. It's... It was placed before zoning was effective. So the fact that it's too close to the road is just a function of when zoning came into place. So, we need to address that. But then you're now all...
And that's why it was never... It was never an approved lot, I guess, anyway, because of that. Or... And I'm just here to get the variances that it should have, essentially.
So you're looking... But can we explain why... Why are you... What are the additions to be used for? Why you're adding, you know, them in the locations that you're putting them in?
Um, with the... Just on the side? On the side of the house, I want to increase...
The one on the side is the non-conforming use.
Right.
Yeah. The expanded use. Right.
And that would be just to increase the size of the kitchen, because it's so narrow as it is. And I'd like to be able to put a table and have more use there.
Okay.
And that's really that side, then. And the back is conforming, so that's kind of a non-issue.
Right. And there was an existing garage, again, that was... Has been there for a while.
Right.
So that's not...
I didn't request that variance, but it's there, so I might as well request it now.
The zoning board makes it a point to make sure everything on the site conforms so we deal with everything at one time.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, um, in terms of, uh, you know, one of the things we have to look at is whether there are alternatives, because you're looking to expand the kitchen that is already on that part of the house, and you buy, or, the, um, the, the house has already been identified to this board as having an issue with, as cars come down the street.
Right.
You know, we do recognize that you want to be able to do something on that, that side of the house to be able to restrict there.
We already planted trees, like you guys previously said, why don't you plant some trees, so we did that as well.
All right, but with the addition, are you going to be putting any windows on that side that, that is just gonna?
It would change.
Problem, or are you shifting it a little bit?
It would not, no, I'm gonna shift it, shift the windows to expose, you have a nice view of the rocks and everything there, which now we don't.
Okay.
The refrigerator blocks like the nice view.
Okay, that, so, so again, you're addressing an issue that you previously brought to our attention.
Right, and the roof's destroyed, and it's like, got a big sag in it, which needs to be torn off anyway, so
Okay.
If I have to rip that off anyway, I might as well
Do it right.
Push out the whole wall and make it pretty.
Okay.
And you're, I mean, you're not going out a heck of a lot on that side, correct?
No, it's, it's ten feet.
Yeah.
I have an engineered plan here, if you guys wanted to see that, which shows the setbacks from the addition as well.
To the extent, I guess, relevant, the house is at an angle to the property line, so that corner is actually moving further back.
Right, it's nine feet. So, it's fading away.
Any other questions from board members?
Is it possible to, I mean, because you're expanding the, I mean, the front of the house is within ten feet of the West Hook Road, and by adding this ten feet, uh, on the proposed first-story addition, you're actually increasing the frontage facing the West Hook Road. Is it possible to sort of push it back so that you do your development, um, towards the back, so that you don't really expand the front line of the house facing the West Hook Road?
It would be impossible unless I put a weird angle on the house, which wouldn't be, it would, architecturally, it would look horrible.
Again, he, you've explained that that's where the kitchen is.
Right.
And you're just trying to expand the kitchen large enough to be able to fit a table in there.
In that section, correct, on that side.
How many, I think we asked this question last time, how many homes are past you, past this applic, past this house on West Hook?
There's two new ones being built. I don't know, probably forty or fifty homes on the hill. Thirty to fifty, I'm not really sure, I don't drive
Okay.
That far up often.
So, it is, it's a, but it is a limited neighborhood in terms of, it's not a through street to.
No, it's a dead end at the top of the mountain.
Um, well, yeah, again, yeah, I guess you have to go several miles up the mountain to be a dead end, because I, I did go, I did do a site visit for, at this location, and I went up the mountain, you have to go several miles up.
Right.
So, I mean, so it, it is, this particular road is traveled, because all of those houses, I mean, all the occupants of, of the housing up the mountain do use this particular.
Yeah, come past.
Yeah.
Right.
Come past this particular road, so there is enough traffic going through. My concern was, you know, because it has a frontage facing the West Hook Road, and now we are extending the thing, and yes, uh, as Madam Chairperson had mentioned, that you're expanding the kitchen area, and that's why you need this extra, um, you know, ten, around ten feet of space to further increase the exposure, because as the cars are coming out around, I mean, it, it, it is not much buffer between the road and the house, and.
Right, the plan is to not, it's just to make that space larger, not to have windows, so we can, I don't want to be anywhere exposed than I already am.
I think, given the internal layout of the house, he's limited over his addition. And a lot, it's a wide lot.
I mean, yeah, he's coming very close to the well also.
Yeah, that's.
Which is no issue at all. I called the Board of Health, first I talked to your building inspector here, and he said, call the Board, Board of Health, and the Board of Health has no issues to, you can build your house over a well, there's no problems there.
Okay.
Just beware.
Just be aware, you have to replace your well at some point.
That's right, if you need work done on that well, just make sure somebody can get to it.
Right. I already talked to guys to make sure they can get their A-frames over it to get the well out.
And just because, as they're doing the work, you want to be careful that there's no disturbance of it either.
Right. What's five, I have the well reports here, if you need to see those too, and it's five feet down to ledge rock, so it's, it's really shallow, it's all rock there anyway.
All right, is there, anyone here to speak for or against the application from Lori Barnum and Kevin Keegan, seventy-five West Hook Road, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use to build an addition on the side and rear of the dwelling, as well as a, to address the existing non-conforming use of the front line variance for their existing home, and a twenty-six foot rear line variance for a pre-existing garage? All right, um, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some more.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. We got spoiled, do we have a proposal decision on this one? Oh, boy.
Do you want to offer one, or do we?
That is me coming late, huh? Okay, in reference to Appeal three six one six by Lori Barnum and Kevin Keegan, seventy-five West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use in order to build an addition onto the side and rear of the dwelling, and a forty-five foot front line variance for the existing house, and a twenty-six foot rear line variance for a pre-existing garage pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash one ninety-one and one ninety-four dash one twenty-three respectively, and it being noted that the garage needing the variance is a pre-existing structure as well as the house. Uh, the forty-five foot front line variance is not significantly, or is not affected, uh, by the addition, and that the addition actually is moving, fading away from the front property line, uh, and in terms of the non-conforming use, this is a hardship that is not created by the applicant, as indicated, it's a pre-existing structure, uh, not a structure that was erected by the applicant. The improvement of the house, uh, needing, uh, structural work being done on it, uh, will improve the aesthetics and the nature of the neighborhood. The, uh, improvements also will, uh, have a positive impact on the applicant's use and enjoyment of the property, and for those reasons, I move that said appeal be granted.
Can, can we just amend that to just include the, to specifically say that the, the addition will address a previously, a condition previously brought to our attention, in that the glare of this, the cars coming down the street.
That was my reference to the, their use in, uh, occupancy of the premises, and specifically for the reasons noted.
Okay.
Yes, uh, that was my reference, and I move that said, uh, specific reference be included in my application or motion, and this is a type-two action, under sequence, and no further action being needed. Again, I move that said appeal be granted.
Second.
Um, all, we'll just follow those. Barbara?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, sir, just, on the record, uh, that, we understand that title for the property may be in the name of Lori Barnum Lawley?
Yes.
Did she fully authorize you to come tonight in her behalf?
Yes, absolutely. Babysitter canceled.
Okay. So, you're authorized to proceed on our behalf?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we're, we're up to the reviews at this point, um, so we know further public comments on, on these applications, in both cases, we're just seeing these for the first time. So, item number six, Appeal three six one seven Dalton, Stephen Dalton, eighty-nine Lake Walton Road, Wapenters Falls, is requesting a twenty-five foot sideline variance for an existing ninety-six square foot shed, as well as a variance to allow the shed to remain in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh-seven D two. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this, is this the shed with the dog?
Yeah.
Okay, I know exactly where you're talking about.
Yeah.
All right, so please explain to us why we should be considering this variance.
Oh, I can't, I can't move it back, because I collect water, and I can't go no closer to the side, because it's right on my driveway. Um, there was one there when I bought the house, but it was dilapidated, so, um, I ended up buying this one, and, um, I had it there, I put it there. I tore the old one down, and I got rid of it, and I put this one there.
Okay, hasn't this shed been in another place on the property? I thought this was.
Oh, yeah, well, I was storing it in my driveway. I had it, I have a little turnaround. I had it parked there for maybe like four months.
Okay.
But, oh, it was only until I could tear the old one down, which I did.
So, first and foremost, this, the shed is movable. It's, it is a small shed, ninety?
Yeah, well, it's eight by ten.
Okay.
But it was on concrete, so I was able to put some rollers on it.
Okay.
You know, some plastic PVC.
Explain to us why it can't go further back, I mean.
Well, in the back, I collected.
I'm not understanding, you have a large lot, I'm not understanding where there's water issues or anything.
Oh, yeah. Well, my house tapers back, and it comes in from the, um, from the three seventy-six side of Lake Walton.
Okay.
So, I, I kinda, I'm at like a compound angle.
Okay.
And when, when I get snow and water, I build up. It just collects.
Where on your property is that, that it collects?
Right, straight to the back, um, right behind that shed.
Okay.
It drops right off, at the end of the driveway, where the blacktop stops.
Okay.
It drops down.
Okay, but you have a whole rear yard, why can't it be placed some other place?
That's where it slows down. Well, I have a barn. I have a barn that I, um, requested a variance a few years back. Um, it's a sixteen by twenty barn.
The barn? Okay, the barn is not showing on your survey.
Well, it's probably an old survey. I didn't take pictures, I probably should have. That's why I couldn't move that anywhere, because of where I collect water.
Okay, um, so, I'm gonna tell you right off the start, we're not, we don't have enough information here, because we have to go from the survey, we do have an aerial of, of your home, uh, but we need to understand how close it is and what else, what other features are on the property.
I didn't know nothing about an aerial, sir, like an up-to-date one.
No, you don't need the aerial, we, we pulled the aerial, the staff here pulled the aerial, okay? We're just trying to understand, you have to make the case to us as to why we should really be considering this, that you really have no other place on your property that this shed can go.
Should I take pictures?
Oh, that's very helpful, yes, definitely very helpful, but, I mean, like I said, the survey says nothing about a barn.
No, I'm looking at it, well, at least the one I got it.
It's large.
Yeah, it's a little different.
Yeah, okay, and so why can't the shed, I'm not understanding, why can't the shed go near the barn?
Oh, if you saw it, it's, it's hard to explain, um, I pitch. I leveled that area out.
Okay.
So, that's where my barn could go.
Okay.
It pitches down, it's such a small shed.
So, I don't understand why you can't level out a very small area for this shed.
Because it would look horrible. It would look horrible from the back. Two right next to each other, it would, it would look.
I think I understood that this was a child's playhouse?
It is.
Okay, so again, why wouldn't you want a child's playhouse in the, in your rear yard?
It's still heavy. Because it's his work shed, you know, it's like, you know, he's six years old, so he stays close to me, in, in the garage.
I'm not being convinced here. I don't know about the other board members, but. And is there another, there's another structure just past the driveway that's?
No, that's it. Straight past the driveway, to the left.
Straight past, there's something small, it's not.
That's it.
That's the playhouse.
That's, that's it, yeah.
And there's something on to the right.
With the little barn style, with the little barn.
With the little.
It's red.
Oh, okay, the red.
It's red, it's got a.
What's, there's something to the right of the driveway as well.
So, your property has three, your property has three improvements, you have the house.
I'm sorry?
Your house, your property has three improvements, the house, the barns, and the shed.
Three structures.
Yes. Well, my house really ain't much of an improvement, but
Okay, well.
I got the barn and I have the shed.
You have a house, a barn, and a shed.
Correct.
Anything else on the property?
Are there any other structures on your property?
Do you want me to pull anything?
Excuse me?
Do you want me to pull?
No. No, I got a porch. I got a back porch.
All right, that porch is not showing on here either.
Oh.
This is the playhouse, and this is the shed.
Um, what I would suggest is, you need to get a.
I, I know, you know, I'm a little unprepared, yeah.
We need to know where, what, what you have, I mean, right now, it's sketches.
Okay.
There's something straight back, there's something here, and there's something.
So, what we need is photographs that you mentioned about your property condition, and this updated survey, um, based, so whoever did the survey can just update it, it should be enough.
How do I do that? How do I get an, an update?
Who's the surveyor?
I've never done it.
Okay, who is it, uh, you know, somebody had the survey, somebody did the survey.
Yeah, I think it was when I got the house, they gave the, the real estate lady.
How long have you owned your house?
Um, I bought it in oh-five.
Okay, so you would have had a survey done at that point.
Not, yeah, not an up-to-date one.
Your bank didn't require a survey? Usually, your bank to get a mortgage requires that you have an updated survey.
Or a survey inspection.
I don't think I did.
This one's dated eighty-three.
Yeah, that's when the house was built. I bought it in oh-five, and I don't think I had a.
Yeah, when you look at the survey, you will have the name of the, uh, person who did the survey.
Pam, can you tell us on the survey who did it, who did the survey?
That's, that's blocked out.
It's blocked out.
Well, it didn't get covered.
Well, let me ask you, would I, would I need, would I need a survey, or would pictures be suitable?
Well, the pictures will help, all right, but again, you, you, you have to convince this board that you have no other alternatives.
Oh, I can do that.
Honestly, all I'm seeing is a totally blank rear lawn.
I know. I thought it would, I don't know, I thought it would.
I'm not understanding why you can't put a ten-by, ten-foot by ten-foot shed in the backyard.
Okay. Okay.
Where barns, honestly.
Okay.
All right, so that's, that's what you need to convince this board.
Okay.
So.
I just have a question I need to clarify. When you come down the driveway, to the right of the driveway, there's a shed?
Directly across from my house.
And then beyond the driveway is the playhouse?
No, the shed is the playhouse, he's calling it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a shed, yeah, it's the same one.
Are there three additional structures aside from the house?
Is there another structure on the other, at the end of the driveway?
No, there's one.
There's just one?
There's, it's only one on my, on the right.
Okay, I'll just have to check, I thought I drove by and I thought I saw three.
I should have had pictures, you know what?
Okay, all right, I thought I saw the barn, and then a structure at the end of the driveway, and then the shed on the side, but.
No, at the end of my driveway, I have my house, and I have the, I have the, my son, that only part from my son, my, the, the shed.
The shed, okay.
It's a shed.
But you have a barn.
And then, far beyond that, to the left, I have a barn, yeah.
Which one, on the aerial, which is the barn?
The one on the corner, next to the one on the corner, okay, so the one that says these.
The barn's not built where it's wet, is it?
Yes, you want to.
No, no, that's why I had to go there. That was my only spot for it.
Why can't you put the, the playhouse shed next to the barn?
Does Zoe do that?
Because then I would be in the middle of my yard, I would.
Right next to it.
Uh, it would, it would look horrible, really, it would look gaudy.
You have to take some pictures of it, convince me.
Can you tell me where your house is, because I see three structures.
Normal. I'll pull it.
Okay, tell me where your house is.
The variance, we got the garage. I want to go with that.
Is your property on there?
When you got the variance, for the garage or for the barn? It's a garage.
Oh, it's a garage, okay.
Three to four years ago, I would say.
All right, so, so the board member should understand, he did just get a variance a couple of years ago for the garage, well, for the barn that's being used as a garage, so.
I don't think that, I don't think that is.
Right, okay.
When he calls barn, you call garage.
Okay, I see.
So, we, we're gonna look at that, Pam's gonna look at that file and see what information might be in that file to see if there's, there's something more that could help us here, because obviously, the members who were on that board at the, at that time had sufficient information to make a determination, so there might be something more in that file that we're not seeing. All right?
So, what I, you know, so what I would suggest is wait until next week, month, so that we have updated information.
And also, if you contacted your attorney at the real estate transaction, or he contacted the title company, they may have a full version of the survey in their file. You had an attorney when you bought the house?
Okay, I could try that.
You had an attorney when you bought the house?
Yes.
And you had a title company sitting at the closing day?
Yes.
One of them might have a better version of the survey.
Okay.
All right, because that would really help us.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I.
You know, right now, like I said, we see a cleared backyard, so.
Yeah, I do, it is clear.
Okay, well.
It just pitched.
And the location of the septic and the well?
Um, they're in the back of the house. They're in the center of my backyard.
That's important for us to know as well.
Yeah, I know, that's another problem, but.
Okay, all right, so.
My well's in the front, though. My well's in the front, my septic's in the back.
So, for next month, we, we, our clerk will pull out your last file, your, the last variance on this property, to see what information, see if there's anything more updated on that file that helps.
Okay.
And then, in the meantime, if you can just contact the various people that, that John has mentioned, your attorney, the, you know, whoever did handle your closing, to see if anybody has the actual survey that was, that was done at the time.
I will.
Okay, um, and then pictures, pictures would be very, very helpful.
Yes. Definitely.
We'll bring, we'll do another review at next month's meeting, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Just to note, since the survey's only nineteen eighty-three, it's around someplace.
Oh, yeah, it's not old. I mean, eighty-three, it's not really.
No, but it's around, but we want to see inverted, yeah.
It's really not.
So, it's around, it's in a title company filing.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Dalton, thank you, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Do you have a blacktop or a gravel driveway?
Uh, it, see, it says gravel driveway, but I don't. It's, it's paved.
Yeah, it's paved.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and last, number seven, Appeal three six one eight, Meyer, William C. Meyer, Forest Spring Metal Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a forty-five foot rear line variance for a proposed eleven-foot by sixteen-foot garden shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh-seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, your application, which I will compliment you with a much more completed application.
Thank you.
Your, your, your answers are extremely more detailed than, than some other applications we see, so it makes it a lot easier for us to understand what you're. So, explain, please explain to us what you're trying to do.
I'm trying to put a garden shed in the backyard, and what I'm trying to do is tuck it back in near the property line, but behind a couple of white pine trees.
Okay.
I have a bunch of pictures here, I'm not sure what you have with the application.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. And can you confirm in this aerial, is this your lot here, this one?
That's right.
Okay, so, if, folks, if you look at the aerial, look for the lot that's number eight six zero zero six two.
Thank you.
But it's kind of off to the side, it's not in the middle.
This is the one?
Correct.
Okay.
What I'm trying to do is, here's an area of property.
Okay.
This is my house, and what I'm trying to do is tuck the shit right behind these two pine trees. This is, uh, East Hook Road, and this is Spring Metal, and if I don't tuck it back in here, if it's out here someplace, I mean, over here is the septic field, and
Okay.
There were, on this map here, shows this area, these two trees, which were removed to put the septic system in. Okay, so, this area here is where the septic system is, and this area here is for the expansion, septic system. So, what I'm trying to do is tuck it behind these two pine trees, so it's not really visible from, uh, Spring Metal, or up here, East Hook Road, where it would be out here someplace, where it would be very visible from there also.
Okay.
And I did, my neighbor over across the street, that's Wright's Greenhouses over here, I know, uh, Mrs. Wright, and she sells the plants and stuff, she sits in the greenhouse and likes to look up here, because she already talked to me about, am I gonna plant trees along here to block her view, and I already told her no.
Oh, okay, all right, that's important to know, okay.
What I want to do, if I put it out here, then I'm blocking her view from there, so I'm basically trying to tuck it behind those two pine trees, very close to the property line there, and, uh, so it's not visible from East Hook Road, and it's also not very visible from, uh, Spring Metal here, and then it's not stuck out in the middle here, like a circle, because basically, there's like ninety feet from property line to this corner of the house, which means if I have to go with fifty feet, I'm already, I'm about thirty feet from the house, I'm way in the middle of the yard, and then it would be visible from here, and it would be visible from here, if I tucked it behind those trees.
Okay, devil's advocate here, why not tuck it against the house?
Well, uh.
Just, just curious? We, we have to explore the alternatives.
On this picture here, this shows, what's the right one, these are the two pine trees, and I'm trying to tuck it behind, you know, I have the porch here, and if you look from, this is another view, looking from, towards East Hook Road, where it would be, again, tucked behind those trees.
All right, maybe you need to give us the view, looking at, from the rear of your property, at the rear of the house, that might help.
I live down the street, so I go by your house often.
Okay.
And, uh, their house is very visible from these stuff, so if they put it up close to the house, it would be much more visible.
Much more visible, but they can make it blend in with the house, look like an addition to the house, as opposed to having it be standalone.
The house is kind of raised up a little on the back, so it would, I think it would stick out.
Okay, and, and, that's how it holds it out.
I can bring you some pictures, how do you, through the flash drive, put it there and show them?
Yeah, or, or just print out a couple of pictures for us, and this way, we'll have them in the file. But, yeah, we could, the flash drive could go in the computer there.
We'd like to have, we'd like to have some pictures from the files.
Picture here, and again, this is the property, and this is the way out there.
As far as the neighbor behind you, has he said anything?
Uh, what there is there is he has a, a tree farm, Christmas tree farm.
Okay.
Which is right here, and you can't see all the saplings, and you've got rows of saplings.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's either a cemetery, or it's really small trees. Looks like headstones, sorry.
And, you know, if somebody would mount there, I could show them exactly, you could really see where, you know, like you're tucking in and there's.
Have you talked to him as far as putting it up near his property?
No, I figure he'll get the notice and I assume that, if you do any property lines or I heard-
Up to five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, okay, so.
Yeah.
And if you know him and he gives you a letter saying there's no objection, we can stick that in our files too.
Right, and I would actually encourage you to go back to Mrs. Wright's and see if she'll get, give you a letter explaining about her wanting to see uninterrupted view. If you can, maybe.
I already talked to Mr. Wright.
Okay.
And he told me that, you know, he had no problems at.
That's what, okay.
And in fact, he said if I wanted to have no objection being going closer to its property line, but it's twenty-five feet on the side.
Okay, great.
And I'm gonna be probably about twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, you have no screening on your property.
There is one picture of the-
Wow.
The, which one, here?
No, I guess it's the, uh, survey.
All right, which one?
Let me see that. Where it shows actually where I'm.
This one?
Yes, this is the one right here, where it shows basically where it's in the dimensions.
Yeah.
You know, it shows the, uh, where the septic is right now.
Correct.
So, you're, you're, your hope is to tuck it within the trees?
Yes.
But, I mean, I think, what, you're five feet away from the property line?
Correct, yeah.
Can you make it ten?
Well, then, then I'm into the trees and I have to cut those trees now, so I kinda-
Or can you fit it into the, into the gap, into the space next to the trees? You know, and what's it gonna look like, too? What's the, do you know-
The gap, which gap I'm talking about now would be going this way.
Are we, are we looking at putting it here or higher trees? You're putting it, so you won't see it from your house?
Well, the tree, I'll see it, the, the trees will block a lot of it, from my house, from, you know, East Hook and also Spring Meadow.
But your neighbor behind you is gonna have a view. So, so it's gonna be in that-
But he's got, there's a lot of trees and stuff there, his house is over here.
Yeah, there's saplings. And he's gonna be replacing them over the years.
There's a lot of big ones in here. These one here are big ones.
Okay.
And then there's a lot of saplings and stuff like that.
Good thing you came.
He has several lots, that's not his house.
Actually, the property behind us is not the owner. The owner of that property-
He doesn't live there.
He does not live there, he rents that.
Oh, okay.
So, he, he lives two pieces of property apart.
Okay.
There's four pieces of property that's back at the, uh-
What's his name?
You know what, we're gonna ask, actually ask you guys to go back to the microphone because when you're not speaking at the microphone, the sound doesn't get picked up on the tape, so.
Okay.
Oh, no, you can still talk, you're, you're absolutely welcome to, because I think what you're saying is important.
I never needed a microphone in my life. My only point was, um, that Mr. Davy does not live in the residence behind us.
Okay.
He cannot see any part of our property from his residence. It's all blocked by trees. But he does own the property behind us and he rents it.
Okay, so he can't see your house, but the question is, is he going to see the shed?
Not from his house.
Not from his house, not from his residence.
His tenant will.
But if he's in his backyard, is he gonna see your shed?
No.
No, because there's a, there's a-
Because he's, he's lots away.
He's in the, he's in the-
He's three lots away.
No, his two.
Okay, let me rephrase it. No, 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 let me rephrase one, okay.
There's multiple lots there.
Correct, and the person who is renting will be able to see, see the shed?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's the point, I mean, the owner of the property, whether it's the owner or the renter, they, somebody, whoever is living at that property is going to see that.
And the owner may move back into that property at some point.
Is there a, a house on that lot?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Here.
It's the, the Christmas tree farm between where it's supposed to shed and-
And that house.
So, if, from the corner of your house to the, to your property line, you said was about ninety feet?
Yes.
Right? So, I'm gonna guess this is like another hundred and twenty feet here.
I think it's probably a little more, I'd estimate about a hundred and sixty.
You think it's about, okay, um-
In that range.
So, from their house, their view of this shed is, you think about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty feet away?
Yeah, even if you say it's a hundred and twenty, you know, it's-
It's probably blocked by those full septic trees.
And there's some of these trees, which are, you know, fifteen foot tall, uh, blocks part of it.
Blocks in the view.
Okay, and what are you proposing that this shed's gonna look like? It's not gonna be red or?
No, uh, there should be some pictures in there.
They taking a, a sales location?
Yeah, no, we have a black in there.
Hold on, I got it, got it, got it, thank you.
One of your properties pins, so you know, you have that?
Yes, I did have the surveyor come out and one pin, there was two I found. The third one I couldn't find, he came out and located it.
All right, eleven-foot by sixteen-foot garden shed is a rather large shed. You know, it's not, you're not gonna hide that, so what is the, you know, you're calling it a garden shed? So, what are you proposing to be storing in there?
Uh, wheelbarrows, garden tools, uh, chainsaw, you know-
Lawnmower?
Lawnmower, you know?
Two snow blowers.
Snow blower and stuff.
Well, a snow blower storing it all the way back there?
Well, what it would need would be-
It'll store there in the summertime.
And not put in the garage.
All right.
Here's a colored picture of that.
Oh, thank you, much better.
Basically shows the, uh, these are pictures of one, it's on site. I'm gonna actually build it myself. The doors will be a little different and the, uh, shutters and stuff will be different. I'm gonna try to match the site into the color of the house.
What color is your house?
It's, it's like a green, white, green.
Okay, because all I see are, is the white. And white would just be too-
It would be close to the color of this, right?
I mean, to the extent that it could be green and again, it, it just gives it more camouflage. You know, that, I think that would help. The doors and the windows will be facing your house?
Will be facing my house.
I think I have the one need to go out there. I'm, I'm not often by this way, so I'm not as nearly as familiar as Marv would be. So, I certainly trust Marv's judgment, but I think I just need to see it myself.
Do you need photographs, Norm, for next time?
Yeah, um, yeah, we, we certainly said if you can take a photograph from the back of your property, of the back of the house?
Okay.
That, that would certainly, would help. Now, the question is, do we want to explore this a little bit more? Or do we wanna have, get public comment and, you know?
We can certainly go see it, I don't know why we need to have a review again.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, I think.
All right, do a public hearing?
I mean, I think there's gonna, there's still concerns about why it can't be in another location. But I think let's hear from the neighbors because of the neighbors. Are there any other sheds in the area that are not, you know, that are, is putting a shed in this case, in this place in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood? Or is this really-
Well, there's, on the corner, if you can see from the one photo, there's the two barns that belong to White-
Yeah, they've got, they've got a number of buildings on that lot.
Yeah, well, I've been on, that's, the greenhouses are on the west side of East Hook and they've got two barns that are on the west side, or the east side.
Are there trucks or are there some sheds?
And there is a shed up on the-
Was a truck, I think it was a shed.
That's, I think you took that off. You used to have a lot of, uh, trucks stored.
That might be a, yeah.
You used to have a truck behind it when they were building this.
We're just, there's some additional boxes on there, we're just trying to make sense of whether they might be trucks?
He also said-
On the photo?
Yeah, on the photo, on the aerial.
The one in the front is, he sets up the-
This was an old beer truck that he has since removed.
Okay.
That, like, and this out in front is, uh, he sells vegetables in the summertime.
So, it's a garden stand?
And it's garden stand, it's on wheels and that's the, a new car.
That's why I love a shed to me.
And that's, you know, he'll be available every ninety miles over to the other side of that property, so.
All right.
The only thing that's there right now are the two barns.
Okay.
Those two barns, that's been removed and that, that is just seasonal.
Again, whoever owns these property up here, here, and here, getting a letter from them would help, uh, so this area at least.
Would help your case.
Correct.
Your lot is also, I didn't call it.
It's sloped up the hill, but not, not-
Not bad.
The back is higher than the front?
No, it's sloped up the hill.
It goes, goes uphill along, uh, Spring Meadow. It, it, it's pretty dramatic, it's uphill, but I, I don't know if your lot's-
The house that's in the back, sits lower or higher than?
Not, uh, to the, I guess, left of him. You're not, you don't see it on the picture.
It's at the same elevation?
This is about the same elevation to here. And here it goes back up towards, up towards the mountain.
Yeah, but we're looking at the location which is going to be disturbed, uh, you know, what happened?
From your back porch, looking out?
Yes.
Okay, now I get what this picture is. This is looking from the back, this picture is looking from the back of his house, at that house in the back. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, you can't see the house, yeah, that's the tree farm.
Yeah, that helps to understand the trees that they've got there.
Yeah.
But it does, and, and, and the fact that they, there are a couple of large trees there says, all right, this-
Messed myself up before.
They might not see the shed, but-
They won't, they won't see the shed. I mean, just looking at the aerial too, the trees are pretty, there's not a straight line of sight from any space from that house.
Until somebody cuts it together for Christmas tree.
If they do that big, yeah.
You know, they need to like fifteen, like, what, two, three, four.
No, I, I, I can see that.
That's possible.
But, you know, and that's something that we have to anticipate, but-
Okay, that's all.
But as far as bringing it up, like, ten feet, five, five feet instead of, because it looks like you would still find it.
I'd be right into those trees. I might cut those pine trees down, then it would be more-
Well, you could trim the branches without cutting them down.
Isn't there space in between the two?
There's not enough space to move that far forward.
I mean, again, you might, you might wanna take a picture showing, so we get the nature of it.
I'm gonna have to trim the back of those trees with, so they're gonna be improved, the shed, that's all, that's all I need to do.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you, these are the trees that you're talking about, correct? Are you putting them behind trees?
Yes, behind those trees.
Why not to the side?
That's what we've been asking, I think.
Well, the, uh, septic system is right over here, they had to cut these two trees down. Like the, one area that you have shows the two trees before the house was built. And then the other area is the expansion area for the septic space, so I'm trying to state, out of the area-
So, your septic goes that far back?
Well, it should be on the, the one. This is the, what I got from the builder, which has the different stuff. So, this is the existing, and these two trees were right here and they had to take those down. And then this is the, they consider the expansion area.
Right.
So, like, you know, I come out from this way, I'm getting into it. If I come this way, I'm into the expansion area, plus it's more visible from East Hook and, uh, the Spring Meadow and-
That helps. What about the option of turning the shed? So, the back of the shed is against the trees? And then the door of the, so the, this is the back and the door is this way?
Tractors in and out.
Well, then it's, um, if I go in front of the trees, then it's gonna be more visible from both places. And then I'm gonna start blocking the view of the one neighbor who likes to look up to the metal towards the hill.
All right, like right here, this way. So, this is the back and then the front is this, so you come in the side. So, the door faces the side. As opposed to putting it the long way against the back of the property.
Instead of this, this way?
Right here is where the two trees came out.
They had to take the tree, okay.
So, they take those trees out.
So, we gotta stay out of that area?
Okay.
That's why I thought I'd talk it about.
All right, just understand, we're just trying to justify why this is, you know, why you really have no other options. That, that's important for us to, um, understand that. All right, so do I have a motion to put this on for public hearing from March twelve?
So moved.
Same? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
But please do make sure that you properly advertise it.
Yeah, please see Pam, she'll give you your instructions for assigning.
Follow the instructions.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you.